I'll call this meeting of Monongahia County Board of Education to order, please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we're gonna start tonight off with one of our favorite things, and that's recognitions, and uh... First recognition is uh... Mohegan Idol was, is presented each year by Monongahia, or Morgantown High School, sorry Morgantown. Student Council has raised over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to support Children's Miracle Network and WVU Madison Children's. We'd like to recognize this year's Mohegan Idol winners. And tonight, our first one, I don't know. We have, and I'm gonna have Board Member Kelly hand these out for me. Our first winner, and I went to this show, and it was awesome. I really, really appreciated the invite and enjoyed it. Elementary School Division is Anna Gertis, and she's a fifth grader at Suncrest Elementary. She was singing, she's singing and tap dance to "I Got Rhythm," and is Anna here?
You wanna sing?
You wanna tap?
Probably not.
Damn, we got car corded, so.
Okay, um, I'd like to thank student council for putting on the show, it was a really amazing experience, and I advise kids to do it.
The winner of the Middle School Division is Matea Abersold, who's an eighth grader from Westwood Middle. Uh, the talent was singing and playing piano to "In Jesus's Name, God of Possible." Congratulations.
Guess what, you get six of them. It's on, it's, it's just recorded, it's on back.
Um, I'd like to thank the people who organized the show, it's an amazing idea, it's really beautiful, this is how it all comes together. And I'd also like to thank everybody who supported the whole experience, that everybody's experience has.
And the winner in the High School Division is Carrie Radonovich, and she won this year's High School Division by singing "Please Don't Make Me Love You." And a fun fact that they have here for me about Carrie is this spring she played the title role of Ariel in The Little Mermaid at Morgantown Theater Company, and starred as Anna in University High School's production of Frozen. And when I, when I come after the meeting, or after seeing the event, I said, "We gotta see, we gotta recognize this kid." Uh, it was awesome, and it was, it's a talent that is just not Morgantown and Mon County talent, you've got real talent. It was excellent.
I know you're not afraid to speak.
Um, I just wanna say that Mohegan Idol, I've done it, this was my second year, and both times it was so fun, and I loved watching all of my friends perform, and I wanna thank all my friends and family and supporters that came to watch me, and um, thank you so much for having me.
Congratulations to all of our winners. Our next recognition is the state young writers, or state winners of young riders, writers. And it is, Monongahia County has the first place winner in the West Virginia Young Writers Contest this year. Hazel Iafrades, seventh grader from South Middle School, won the seventh and eighth grade division for a story titled "Funerals Never Made Me Cry." Hazel is Erica Rhodey-Havers, English class, congratulations, are you here tonight?
Yep.
I'm gonna have Board Member Walker do this.
We're gonna spread the excitement around a little bit.
Thanks.
Um, I just wanna say thank you so much to Ms. Rhodey, because I couldn't have done this without your support and writing suggestions, and suggestions for doing the thing in the first place, so, thank you so much, Ms. Rhodey.
And Mrs. Brown, do you wanna, Mrs. Brown, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
In regards to how wonderful our futures are itself, Ms. Rhodey is a good example, Ms. Rhodey, but... And I've heard very good things about Hazel throughout the years, and uh, I'm very proud of her and the accomplishments that she made this year. So, Ms. Rhodey, thank you for being such a wonderful role model for our students, and Hazel, thank you for the love of her.
Thank you. Okay, our next recognition is our National Board Certified Teachers. And we have, once again, a long list of teachers. National Board Certification is the most respected professional certification available in education, provides numerous benefits to teachers, students, and schools. The certification was designate, designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers and to generate ongoing improvement in schools nationwide. West Virginia had thirty-nine new teachers who achieved their National Board Certification in the class of 2022. Ten of them was from Monongahia County Schools. So, the congratulations on this personal and professional achievement, and I'll call them up and I'm gonna have Dan hand these out for us. First is Brooke Adams with Suncrest Middle School.
Thank you so much.
Our next is Jacqueline Gasek with Suncrest Middle School.
Upside down.
Next recognition is Catherine Leon, Morgantown High School. Our next recognition is Chase Leon from Morgantown High School. Our next professional is Kristen Mascaro-Winters from Skyview. Our next is Rachel Simmons from University High School.
Anybody like to say a few words?
Any, our next one, let me get, let me get, oh, I got a bunch more. Our next one is Kristen Smallwood from Morgantown High School. Our next professional is Carrie Anne Smead from Morgantown High School.
See if we can make sure it's the next one.
Next teacher is Samuel Snyder from Morgantown High School. And our next is Danielle Tennant from Clay Patel. I'll just buzz through them and I'll get you guys a chance to get pictures. Did you get picture, individual arrow?
Does anybody like to say a few words?
Talk, somebody could talk to us just a minute about what this meant, to just, just give us a little bit of an idea of what you go through.
And it was a routine.
Um, I know that for Chase and I, this was several years of incredibly hard work. Um, it means a lot to have been able to go through this process together and with several of our friends up here. Um, this was an awesome cohort, and I'm just so proud of everybody here who, yeah, if you're standing here, you know how much time, how much, how many tears went into this sometimes, so, congratulations to everybody.
You guys get in there and get a good picture. Do you wanna recognize the principals who are here? I, I can't see them from here. I saw, I saw Mrs. Kineski, and I also saw Ms. Green, Ms. Green from University High School.
And Jackie, Jackie from Clay Patel.
Clay Patel is here, and I can't see you guys. And Jen Cox, I saw her walk by at the door earlier.
She's back here.
And Suncrest Middle School, who's here to represent Suncrest, anyone? I don't think so. Okay. Thank you all, the administrators, and the support you guys have given these teachers throughout this process, it is greatly appreciated. Okay, our next recognition is school nurses. May tenth, twenty twenty-three is National School Nurses Day. National Nurses Week, wait a second. Man, okay, it's confusing me there for a second, 'cause of, but National School Nurses Week begins each year on May sixth and ends on May twelfth, Florence Nightingale's birthday. School Nurses Day was established during this week to foster a better understanding of the role of nurses in the educational settings. On behalf of the Board of Education, we want to thank the entire Monongahia County Schools nursing team for all they do for our students, staff, and families. Monongahia County is fortunate to have a nurse assigned to every school. The Board recognizes the importance of your compassionate work as you care for the almost twelve thousand students daily. We encourage everyone to remember School Nurses Day tomorrow and to thank our nurses for all they do. Take that opportunity tomorrow, please, and, and thank your school nurse when you see them. So... We, at this point, are going to give you guys the opportunity to take off if you have been recognized, 'cause we have delegations and we don't have any, so the rest of it's a professional, so, thank you guys for coming out tonight.
Go do your homework and lesson.
Well, they're almost all done.
Ah, good job.
They're almost all done.
If they're National Board Certified, they certainly wouldn't wait till the night before for a lesson plan.
No, no.
It shows how exciting our meetings are.
It's tough stuff.
Oh, it's very, I'm off.
Okay, Superintendent, course discussion, follow-up action.
Do we have any delegations?
No.
Okay, moving on then, first subject this evening is the Skyview Elementary easement proposal. And this is just an information item at, at this time. And we'll turn things over to our friends, the Adrians, and they'll share with you their proposal. Gentlemen? Could we get, could, could we make sure that you're at the podiums so that we can record everything? It's easier with the microphones. Are we okay, uh, volume-wise? Get themselves set up here. Um, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of the Board this evening, and have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Campbell and his group a little earlier this month to basically talk about a project, um, that's the right, could, is, could we go to the other slide that has the, oh, okay. There's only two slides. There's three? There we go. So, this, um, project has been years in, in the development. It is a, it is a housing development that is going to be on, placed on what was formerly eighty-three acres of Micholi property. We've acquired that, and we've been working with Dan Ryan Builders Group, uh, who is interested in basically, uh, building in this particular area. Um, you could see where, it's a, it's a three-phase development, not two phases, but the pink basically is the first phase. Um, and you can see where Skyview is located in relation to the development. Um, the, the current right-of-way that exists, it's the deeded right-of-way, is the one to the right of Skyview that goes between, um, the football field and the elementary school. Um, and then what we are, what we are in front of the Board today to do is talk about a different right-of-way, a new right-of-way that would actually put it prior to entry to the school, but, um, the development is proposed to be a hundred and eleven single-family homes and ninety-eight townhouses. The portion that you see first, um, is basically the townhomes, which is located just up behind the, uh, the grade school. That will be done in phases, probably in, in at least two to three phases. Uh, the uniqueness about the project is that, you know, there, this is a very beautifully forested, uh, piece of property, and, um, everything that you, that you see, you see where the houses and the townhomes go, but everything else in between is, we are gonna keep the trees there. Um, this is not going to be a clear-cut, um, we're maintaining, uh, view shed between the school and the townhomes. The townhomes actually will sit higher than the single-family homes because of the elevations of the development. Um, and we will be, the pink will be the, basically, the, most of the first phase of, of the, of the development. As you'll see, the entrance just to the left of the, of the, uh... This is the entrance way, as you can see in relation, as you come up the road to the school. Um, the, basically what you're looking at is a period of an area of about one point seven-two acres, um, that, that is needed, uh, for the right-of-way, um, to be able to gain entrance in, you know, into the development. And, um, the plan basically would be, with your all's approval, would be, is that this main, this right-of-way would be built and maintained by us initially, and eventually by the homeowners association, um, as it relates to the ongoing maintenance of it. The, the grade on this, um, is about twelve percent, uh, which sounds like a lot, but in West Virginia, it's pretty typical. And the reason we made it twelve percent versus eight percent is it, it consumed less property, um, as far as the, the, uh, amount of property would be needed in order to get that elevation to get into the development. But that's the elevation you get to of where the townhomes will be sitting, and then it will be basically meandering back down into the backside of the property where most of the, where the rest of the single-family homes will be built. Um, this is, gives you just a little idea of a different perspective of the right-of-way going in, where Skyview sits, the townhomes, and then the first, first phase of the housing, the first phase of the housing development. And this just shows you that, um, there's, the, basically, there's going to be cut-and-fill type of excavation that's needed, and most of that's gonna be kept on-site. There's no anticipated hauling off of dirt on, on the project. Um, our, our game plan for this would be is that we would start this, uh, after school is out, and try to get the vast majority of the excavation done before school starts, at least the vast majority of it done before school starts, um, in August. Whether we get it all done, but, but the, the, the noisiest and hardest part of it would be done once, um, once school's out this summer. The other thing that we talked about, you know, obviously, during this time, the sensitivity of noise and things of that nature, that's why we wanna get most of the work done. Uh, after that excavation is done, then basically you're talking about putting utilities and roads in, um, and again, trying to keep the disturbance to the schools at a minimum. Uh, we're gonna, we would work with the contractor to make sure that they're on-site before the school buses get there in the morning, and either they, they wait until after the school buses are, leave, uh, the school in the afternoon before they would basically exit out, uh, exit out of the, the development. We do plan to have, we have to have, it's not incorporated in, in this as of yet, but we will work with you all to basically have an area for school bus pull-off to be able to pick the students. We think it's, it would be better to be located at the entrance of the entrance road somehow, um, just so the buses don't have to come in close to the development, and it'd be very difficult to turn around, so, we'll work with you within the right-of-way to create that, uh, bus area, though, um, we're hoping the idea would be is that, um, most of the elementary and the middle school students would either be driven to school, I don't know if walking is appropriate, but they would be driven, so, we only anticipate the buses needed for the high school students that would be in the development. So, um, so what we're here to work with you, ask for your, uh, ask for your, uh, agreement on is to see if you'll work with us to, you know, basically to get this, to get this right-of-way. Um, the, the other... You know, the other entrance that we have currently would be basically used for construction at this point in time. And then, after this phase is done, we would basically be working then, um, on Phase Two, which is the purple area. Most, the first phase after that would be to the left, um, as you're going, if you see the arm that goes down to the left, and then Phase Three would basically be all the homes in the steepest part of the development, which is over there with the eighteen acres, you'll see the sign where the eighteen acres is, from that stair, from that area.
So, you're saying Phase Two and Three would use the other right-of-way between the football field and the school?
Uh, for, yeah, they possibly would use that, would use that other right-of-way. The main entrance is going to be, the, the, the new right-of-way will be the main entrance.
I, I mean, after, after you're done with it, like they're, they're all built and everything, they all would come out on the right-of-way that you're requesting? Or would some of the people that live there come down? I guess what I'm asking is that it would be a red.
There'll be, there probably would be a second entrance down through that area.
If it's between the football field and the school.
And, and the only thing, the only reason that is that, you know, while we don't have subdivision regulations, most sub, most, most developments try to have at least two ingresses and egresses, uh, for the property. Uh, we're, our plan would be the vast majority of the property would go down through this right-of-way. Um, but I don't know if we can eliminate that one completely in the future.
And the, and the development would be in charge of maintaining both of those?
Yes.
Roads? So, where was the, there used to be a baseball field up there?
That's, it's, it's right, right, in this corner of the purple, you see the purple, lots one, two, three, and four, to the right.
So, that's still it?
Yeah.
And you're gonna, that's going to stay?
That wasn't part of the property that tran, that, uh, transferred to us.
So, it's still, so they, the Micholys then retained that?
It's, I think it's in the Board of Education, I think it's the Board of Ed.
We had it, it was like a split.
Part of it is, part of it is.
Split deal, yeah.
Oh, is it?
Split deal, yeah.
That was kind of in honor of Brother Paul.
Paul, yeah.
So I imagine they probably will hang on to their portion of that.
Their half of that, okay.
I, I can't speak for them.
Well, it would make for a nice recreational area. You know, for, if we could approach for, either the school or the, for the HOA.
Well, and people walk on the football field, so, I mean, they, that track around there.
The track and stuff.
It's a good exercise area.
So are you looking at maybe putting a walking path from that development so the kids could walk to the school?
Well, I, Ron, I don't know if you, we talked about is, we were putting a walking path, I don't wanna leave the microphone, but basically where you see the second entrance, it's the safest way to do it, thanks. We think the safest way to do that was to put a walking path, basically from here, to basically come down here, that would be, that would be the most, then people could basically get their kids there, and then if they wanna walk, they could walk back and forth to the school from, from this particular, from this particular area. But it was cost-prohibited to put it throughout the development.
I know that, as Ms. Cox can attest to, they start out little, but they grow into high school kids.
Yes, yes. And that's what eventually we'll probably would have to, and try to figure out, work with, see where the best area to put those bus areas to pick up, to pick up the high school kids.
So there will never be, you don't have any properties to actually go out to the other main road?
To River Road?
To River Road?
Um, not that's at a grade where they could, we could make it.
Nancy, we looked at that, but the problem was, there was steepness, it just, it's a cliff to get down to River Road.
Okay, so this, so all the, all of the entrance and exits will all be from that main road in front of the schools?
Yeah, this road coming in to the schools. I've just not shown it here.
So in some ways, that property's actually all landlocked for access?
Besides the deeded right-of-way between the Skyview, or Skyview and the football field?
That's it.
That's it.
How close is your far corner to Westover Park? I can't remember if Westover Park comes up that high, or is there another?
No, we're, this sits above Westover Park.
Is there a property owner in between, or is it us in between?
Yeah, there's a property owner in between, yep. Yes. Yeah, the...
The tuna balls are on one side, my in-laws actually are on the backside to the interstate, and then I don't know if it's a gentleman named Cox, Lexington Cox, that owns between there and Westover Park.
It gets, and it gets very, it gets very steep over here.
Yeah.
There's the power line, it gets very steep, real quick. That's why this is the last area that gets built.
And I know you said this, how many homes in total?
Hundred and eleven.
Single-family homes?
Single family.
Ninety-eight townhouses.
Two hundred families, potentially.
What's the estimated build time begin, first phase? I know it's probably too soon to tell, but...
I, I think they, I, I think the plan would be is probably early twenty-four. I mean, as far as, as far as, you know, they, what they would do is, once we get the site ready, they typically come in and build a model or two, and then they, they work off of that. So our first objective would be to, as we get this ready, I think they wanna put a model here and a model here, and then they just, they basically, they work off of that.
So this lower pink section would be condos?
This is a town, this is all townhouses.
Similar to what Bird's Eye View, if you're on the way, on the other end of River, or Dupont Road.
Right.
Those townhouses they have up there, that's, I think, what they're planning to put.
And then above that, a single-family?
Yeah, and the single families are between three hundred, three-fifties, uh, priced houses, so.
You're trying to find a way to do what they quote affordable housing nowadays is almost like an oxymoron, it's just, but Dan Ryan, if anybody can do it, I mean, they have a product. It's just, it's just a matter, that's what they build and what the market'll bear.
Right.
You know, we're hoping the timing of this, by that time, interest rates would have stabilized and, you know, but they are very excited about the project. Obviously, they like being, the selling point being by the schools, that's, that's a, that's a, you know, and then hopefully, in a couple of years, that new interchange will be in, and that will also provide much nicer access, you know, to the interstate system from the development, for the schools, and basically for everybody.
Just keep the interchange moving.
We're, we're, trust me, I'm pushing. I'm pushing.
Twelve years ago.
Feels like that.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So where would the, the water from all of this, I know it'll be in the plans, but where would that go?
The water, the water is basically is mub?
No, I mean, the...
Stormwater?
Stormwater, oh, no, it, it basically, you can see, you can see the stormwater areas. If I'm flipping this right.
There, there.
See these, these are all, these are all stormwater areas? And most of those stay. So we, you basically contain your stormwater, and then you basically have to, it drains, it drains slowly.
So we won't have no issues of flooding at the school?
If not, there's an engineering company that's gonna be in big trouble.
Yeah.
No, you should not.
I just wanna get that out for the public.
No, because the, most of this will sit below the school. I'm not even sure the townhouses will be above the school, or they'll be, they'll be above the school, so. But everything is going away from the school. All the storm is basically going away from the school.
Westover Park area, down through there.
Yes.
Yeah, so those contour lines are descending as you get away from the...
Yes, that's your, that's your, that's going this way, yep.
Right.
And, and that's what I'm saying, the uniqueness, we were able to keep the cut of the, of the dirt and the fill on the development, so nothing's gonna have to be hauled off. We need it, actually, we need it. As you get into these phases here, most of, all of this dirt is going down in this area. So this, this requires very little. There'll be tree here, there'll be trees here, there'll be trees here, and all that, all those trees remain, which is one of our, was, was one of our objectives, you know, because, I mean, we, we built Harvest Ridge, and there weren't any trees, it was a farm, but it makes, you know, obviously the trees make for much nicer development.
That's a, that was a pretty good development, too, with Harvest Ridge, I mean, that was a huge, I kept driving by and just kept growing.
So over three hundred homes?
So my, I think, probably one of our, just looking at it, is we just paved that road going up to the schools, and we all know just the weight of the, the trucks bringing in everything can do damage. I don't know how we can have some kind of assurance or some kind of agreement. We're going to have to, and I, maybe Mike knows more about this than with the MPO.
I was gonna say, we just wanted.
No, well, I mean, anything as far as, I mean, we'll, we'll work with the contractor and make sure that any, you know, there's before and after, but any potential damage that was done to the road, I mean, it would have to be repaired. I mean, uh...
It was just part of the construction process, okay.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, because we'll be, we'll be, you know, when we come in to do, that's what I'm saying, the vast, like, keeping the equipment on-site and having it there and not back and forth, but eventually, Dan Ryan would, I mean, they're gonna have a lot of deliveries coming in as they start building homes, so it's, you know, we'll take responsibility for any damage done. Oh, you're talking about the, the road going into the school, right?
Yes.
Is there a name for the road, or is it...
That's been in question way back when I was on city council back there, we're not sure what that, anyway, I think, even if, even if the city of Westover found it, they would probably ask me to be bonded, so that part, the other thing I wanted to talk about, curfew, which obviously to get the equipment in and all that, and hopefully they would work with their vendors, and, because we deliver to a lot of the well sites around the state, they have curfew hours where there's no, nothing going up the roads other than school buses. So is that something we could probably work out? Because it's not that long as far as getting kids into school and getting into school, so they would make it clear to their vendors, don't try to deliver anything for this half-hour and that half-hour.
That same thing we've already, that we've mentioned to Dan Ryan, we already mentioned to Dan Ryan, there will be, you know, there'll be times when nobody can, no deliveries, both before school, before those kids get, you know, they get to school, and then afterwards when they're departing, because we don't want any conflicts with the school buses.
Well, the other thing, I was thinking that right-of-way, a lot of the parents are in there parked in that right-of-way to pick up kids, the buses go in the other one, but but it, I'm pretty sure it pretty much fills up, doesn't it, with whatever principal here sets?
Yeah. So whatever that time period needs to be, whether it's eight, seven-thirty to eight-thirty, or two to three, whatever, we just need to go, and we'll build that, we'll basically build that into their, to their agreements. Understanding that.
So will Mrs. Cox be on your, Ms. Cox be on your construction team? So that she'll know what's happening and can ask questions, and I'm hoping it's noticed?
Is there, you wanna pick, you wanna pick your house up? You wanna live close to the school?
I will say, our construction projects on other buildings, when everybody worked with the principal of those buildings, it really, everybody got on the same page pretty quickly.
Well, I think what would be good is, as we get closer to this, then...
Yeah, we'll keep everybody...
Then, we'll get the engine, whoever that we select, because we're gonna put this out to bid, once we select, I mean, we would have a meeting with, with the school and make sure that everybody knows exactly what those parameters are.
Because she'll know what's going on for something out of the ordinary, that she can make somebody aware of it, everybody working together.
And Westwood for that matter, because it's gonna, you know, it'll definitely affect them, and then, of course, as we all know, there's middle school sporting events there certain times, that we'll have to kinda, probably get all those schedules coordinated.
Do you know, is there gonna be any blasting? I was gonna say, that's real rock, I was gonna say...
No.
They drilled, we already drilled a lot of property, and there, there's no rock issue.
Oh, goodie.
Yes.
And the survey is, it's marked, it's flagged, so if you drop up there and look, you can see how it would kinda flow up through the property, so, the new, so the new right-of-way.
I will, will say, we generally, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, we don't go into housing developments with the buses, so probably we would be looking at the bottom first.
We, we would not be planning to go in.
No, right, we just, we just create a spot down there, if we're thinking we picked up or...
We're thinking somewhere down here would be, to develop a pull-off area for the, for the buses, for the kids to be able to, to, to load.
And again, I think, I think Ms. Cox will have some good insights into, she, she knows what that traffic pattern looks like, she'll have some good insights into the, the best location for that spot to pick up high school kids.
I was also thinking, that's why I asked someone about the walkway, because if they're gonna catch that bus, depending on how everything gets rearranged, but high school kids maybe will come down to ride that bus to another location so they can get on it at the school as opposed to up there, depending on how it gets old, once we revamp everything on the buses. It's like an exciting project.
Well, we hope. I mean, hopefully, I mean, the intent would be, it would be a pretty nice feeder to the school systems as well, to those two schools as well.
What I like about it is, it's a walkable community, that's why, because we're running out of those, we keep consolidating schools, and then we're still busing kids everywhere, so it'd be nice to have, you know, a nice walkable community, and, because I think the school can use more for what schools were intended to be used for.
I think this is a great idea, I mean, we've, we've taken schools away from communities now, I think the logical thing is to bring communities to the schools, this is, it's like a good plan.
That's what Dan Ryan was telling us when we were talking with him last week, is they're saying, you know, now it is where, whenever, you know, developments are happening, they're doing it in conjunction with schools, so as they grow, also have property for schools, but in this case, the school's there, so it's just, you know, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, and I, I really do think it'll turn out to be a, a very nice development, and, and hopefully, as it, as it's done, and once it's in there, that outside of the roads, that, you know, there's not gonna be a lot of people know that, from the school perspective, not a lot of notice it'll be there, because it will be, the houses will be down below the school system, the schools. Any other questions?
One thing I would, I did wanna talk a little bit about, how long, and very shortly, as, and, and this might just be a request, as you guys phase this, and as you guys see the construction happening, to try, you have to realize that if we, if we add two or three classrooms to a school, it takes us some time to get them built. So we're gonna have to work with you guys pretty closely to make sure that, that as the, as the kids start showing up at the schools, we have enough room in those schools, and, and it'd be nice to get a little bit of a, have an idea of what the phasing, what the time schedule and all that stuff would be.
Their, their takedown is...
It's, it's probably, I would say this is probably five, six, seven-year...
Oh, yeah.
Built, I mean, it's, it's, it's not a boom, it's a, you know, it's a, it's because they basically, their motto is sell, build, sell, build. That's why they put the models in, and they, but unless it just completely, you know, completely, they have, I think their takedown is twenty-some homes...
A year.
A year, and, and the townhomes, I forget exactly how many, but this probably, this probably won't be built yet, it'll be, it'll be excavated and ready, and s- hydro, and seated, but they're probably gonna work their way back. And there's, there's break points, you know, as to how many they'll build, they'll build at a time, but, Ron, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a long, it's a long build-out from that standpoint, so...
But we can keep you updated, I mean, we know when the sun lights and what they have coming, so...
If you push fifty kids to our elementary school over there, we might need another classroom or two. All right, any other questions? Thank you guys for coming out, giving us an update.
Thank you.
It's nice to know what's going on in the community instead of getting surprised. Superintendent, UHS Lunch Program.
Uh, yeah, this is a refresher on our UHS School Lunch Pilot Program, and I'm gonna have Brian talk to you a little bit about why he's back, and, and then at the conclusion of his remarks, I will make a recommendation for, for an action, and then at that time, if the board has any questions for Brian, they could, they can ask those, so, Brian?
If you remember, in February, I was here and presented the original University High Pilot Program, and after that was approved by all, and the waiver was submitted to the State Board, there was a lot of discussion between Superintendent Roach and Dr. Campbell, and they came back and presented some ideas for us that they would be more acceptable of approving, and so they asked us to pull the waiver, and we agreed to do so, and so here is a, the pilot program which they said they would approve, and the only difference in it is it removes basically one sentence that says that we would leave, University High would leave the National School Lunch Program. That's the only difference to this program, and so now we would stay in the National School Lunch Program and then be able to do this pilot program in front of you.
So everything else is the same?
Everything else is the same.
Brian, is that, are you, you ready for questions?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Um, I, I, I would like to go ahead and recommend to the board that you approve the new UHS School Lunch Pilot Program waiver as outlined by Brian Keel this evening.
Your motion, so moved?
Just a second.
All right, any questions?
So basically, you're gonna have the kiosk, you're gonna let the, the students will be choosing their different foods. Last time, I think we were looking at the projection of the milk products and the other rolls that were coming in, but we're just staying away from all that?
Well, that will still come into effect years down the road, the sodium starts this year, and, and we're working on that, so those are all USDA guidelines, and, and so we'll just have to, at least since this is a year pilot... those are all USDA guidelines, and, and so we'll just have to, at least, since this is a year pilot, won't affect us at all during this year, so every child will have an opportunity to get a free lunch at the five different locations, and unlimited fruits and vegetables, and then we would have just this à la carte location with the four different items, two entree items will be two dollars, and then a drink option and a dessert option for a dollar.
So again, we're going to see if this is better received by the students, we want more participation and.
Yeah, we're hoping that it would, if they're already planning on purchasing an à la carte item, we're hoping that they will also pick up a free lunch as well. Um, also, we're hoping it alters the nutrition, um, we had an opportunity to kinda survey what the students bring in at, for their cold lunch. Oftentimes, it's items that are very unhealthy and very expensive, and so we're providing them healthy options for a lot cheaper than they can bring in themselves. So I'm hoping it increases participation, but also we see a difference in, in what the students are eating in the cafeteria from home.
Thank you, Brian, um, all in favor of the UHS School Lunch Program as presented, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same, thank you, Brian. Superintendent?
Uh, next on our list is the approval of the proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, and I will turn things over to Nicole, and at the conclusion of her presentation, I will be ready to make a recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All right, we're approaching fiscal year 2024, I can't believe it. Um, so each county board of education must prepare a proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Tonight, once you approve the proposed budget, it will be available for public inspection. Then, on May twenty-third, we will hold a public hearing, after that hearing, we will then adopt the budget. The operating fund of the board is the general current expense fund, the operating budget for fiscal year twenty-four is a hundred and fifty-six million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. The revenues are comprised of taxes of seventy point one million, local sources, two point six million, state sources, seventy-eight point three million, Medicaid billings, five hundred thousand, indirect costs from federal grants, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and unrestricted beginning balance of five million dollars. This is a comparison to fiscal year twenty-three, our taxes increased by four point four million, we discussed this previously, previously in March at our levy meeting, our local sources increased by four hundred thousand, and this is attributed to the interest that we're earning on our bank accounts. State sources increased by seven million dollars, most of this is due to the twenty-three hundred across-the-board pay raise for all employees, and the additional funding for the Third Grade Success Act. Um, our estimated transfers in decreased by a million dollars, and this is a result of our indirect cost rate. Um, and then the beginning balance has increased by a million dollars, any questions there? And then, um, fifty percent of our operating budget is comprised of state sources, our regular levy taxes represent twenty-three percent of our budget, and excess levy is twenty-two percent. Our proposed expenditure by category function, earlier, before the board meeting started, I handed you out a sheet of paper, and this goes through what, what is found in each category, um, if you need to see what we're paying out of that. So, um, for instruction, it represents fifty-four point three-three percent of our budget, um, operation and maintenance of facilities, eleven percent, and student transportation, nine percent.
Nicole?
Yes.
So the money for the, that, the one, uh, one point two-nine percent that will be going to the charter school?
Yes, so what happens is, um, if you go back here, actually, to this slide, when we get our state aid, it's actually forty-eight point six million, and it would be plus that two million, but because we have to, um, it gets routed to the charter schools.
Directly.
We have to reduce that from our basic state aid, so we have to show it as an on-behalf payment.
So you don't have to do, you have no DM as far as passing that along?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's a direct state allocation.
But we have to show it on our books, because all of the revenue, the way that the revenue flows, how they do our comps. And this is a comparison to twenty-three, um, most of the increases are mostly due to the twenty-three hundred dollar pay increase. Um, you'll see that general administration increased by three hundred and eighty-four thousand, um, this increase was the result of our general liability insurance increasing five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, this is where we account for that expense. Our, um, student transportation also increased, part of that is the pay raise, but we are seeing that the cost of buses is going up, the ticket parts, all of the costs for diesel, for gasoline, um, it's really increased, it's really hitting our transportation department. Um, for the community service, we actually decreased by two hundred and eighty-three thousand, this is our pre-K collaborative programs, and we have been seeing a decrease in the enrollments there. Um, principal retirement, we're projecting a six hundred thousand dollar increase, we're getting ready to go out to bid for Chromebooks, and we do do a capital lease financing for those, and we're estimating that the payment is gonna be about six hundred thousand. And then, um, the last thing on this slide is the transfers, it's increased by a little over two million dollars, and this is the, um, sponsor contribution that we will be transferring to our child nutrition program. And then this is the expenditures by object, as you can see, eighty-one percent of our budget is representative of salaries and employee benefits. And then, um, our supplies is seven percent, and other purchase services, five percent. It's been a very tough budgeting season, um, we've had several different comps, we were, because the legislature was trying to figure out what they, what we were doing with PIA, um, we were about two weeks late in getting our comps this year, but our PIA employer costs increased by two point seven million dollars. For a family plan, it was around ten thousand eight hundred to eleven thousand, now those plans for the employers are around fourteen-nine to fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. Um, what we did find out is there is a supplemental appropriation that is at the state budget office for around fifty-five to fifty-six million dollars. Mon County share is two point three million dollars, so we are hoping, once the legislatures reconvene, that they will, um, approve that supplemental appropriation. The, um, Third Grade Success Act, um, the thirty-eight First Grade AIDS interventionist, it is three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand that the state aid does not cover, as well as our twenty-three hundred dollar pay raise of five hundred and fifty thousand, and then again, our Board of Risk and Management liability increase was five hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Any questions there?
And, and they, there was never any solution to the Board of Risk liability?
I think they were trying to cap it, um, through, through the legislature, but I do not think that that passed, I think it failed.
So it just didn't?
Right.
Because there was a lot of discussion in Charleston.
That is correct, yes. All right, our second fund that we maintain is a special revenue fund, and it accounts for all state and federal grants. This budget will be twenty million, six hundred thousand, ninety-nine dollars. And then it's comprised of local sources of five hundred and ten thousand, state sources of about two point six million, and federal sources of twelve point five million. And then it mostly, um, for the expenditures is instruction and food service. Comparison to twenty-three, our local sources, um, we're projecting to be increased by three hundred and sixty-six thousand, and that will be the à la carte program that Brian just spoke of. Then, um, the transfers from the general fund increased by two point six million, and again, that is going to be the sponsor contribution to, um, the child nutrition program. And then the proposed expenditures, fifty point seventeen percent of this budget is, um, allocated to instruction, and thirty-nine point six percent is allocated to food service. And then sixty-eight percent of the budget is salary and employee benefits with, um, supplies at twenty-two percent. And then the third fund that we maintain is the permanent improvement fund, and this is to account for all of our capital improvement activities. Our budget for twenty-four for this fund is ten million, five hundred thousand dollars. The estimated beginning balance is ten point five million, and then anything that is in this account must be used for capital projects. We cannot move the money out once we move it in. Projects that we have ongoing are the Excel addition of four million dollars, North Safe School Interest of one point five million, and the HVAC boiler roof upgrade to a replacement of two million. Our fourth fund is the debt service fund, and that is our bond payment for twenty-twenty-four, the budget is three point one million. The revenue is comprised of property taxes of two point nine million, other local sources, four sources, which is our pilot money, eighty thousand dollars, and beginning balance, a hundred thousand, and then our debt service payment of three point one million. And then our last fund is the Federal Stimulus and Stabilization Fund, which we are required to account for all of our CARES, SFR funding in this account. The budget for twenty-four is eight million, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars, sorry. This will be the last year that we will have this money, it expires nine-thirty of twenty-twenty-four, but my projections show that we will have it all spent out by six-thirty of twenty-twenty-four. Um, and most of the expenditures are for instruction and support services. What are we paying out of these dollars? Twenty-three positions we transferred from the general fund. Um, pre-COVID numbers, we were about eleven thousand, five hundred for student enrollment, now we're around eleven thousand, three hundred, three hundred. Um, so that accounts for one point eight million dollars. All Kids Eat for Free, one point five million, after-school tutoring, summer avalanche, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, indirect cost, a hundred and sixty-three thousand. And then we also added fifty-seven point five new positions, and that cost us three point nine million dollars. So, the last few slides, the federal government requires the Western Virginia Department of Education to monitor all school districts that received any of the SRF funding. There are several different areas that they had monitored, and, um, during their review, they will provide the following ratings, compliance, meets compliance with recommendations, or does not meet compliance. I'm happy to report that Mon County was compliant in every area that they looked at, so, it's very good. And these were the different areas that they, um, looked at. So the first one was, um, the LEA shall make available on their website a safe return to in-person instruction. Um, the second one was that the LEA was to submit a plan on how the ARP SRF funds were to be used and maintained on the website. An LEA receiving funds under ARP SRF shall receive not less than twenty percent of such funds to address learning loss through implementation of evidence-based interventions. Activities coded to twenty percent required learning loss set aside need to meet one of the four tiers of evidence-based interventions. The LEA only spends funds for allowable activities based on approved SRF two, ARP SRF, and ARP HCY applications. The LEA does not exceed their approved indirect cost rate. The LEA has a clean fiscal audit, the LEA supports an updated equipment list and conducts, conducts a fiscal inventory. All SRF two summer sole ARP-funded staff complete time and effort reports, LEA has a system of internal controls. As a condition of receiving funds under section two thousand and one, an LEA shall not, in fiscal year twenty-two or twenty-three, reduce per pupil funding for any high-poverty schools served, and this just goes on to a little bit more about that. And then, an LEA using funds for remodeling, renovation, and new construction, we did not allocate any of our ARP dollars for that. We directed all of the money towards positions, um, and additional support services for our students. And then the last one, our LEA maintains written standards of conduct covering conflicts of interest, so, questions?
So Nicole, um, what I'll be recommending to the board is that they approve the release of the budget to be published, or are we adopting tonight?
Tonight, I need you to approve the proposed budget.
Okay, all right, so.
And we will adopt it on May twenty-third.
All right, so with that said, Superintendent recommends to the board that they approve the proposed twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget as presented this evening.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second. Board members, any questions?
So. Do you? Do you see us being able to create, recoup funds in order to continue to, to serve the students the way we have with this SRF money? I mean, has there been any discussion, you know, the state has talked about surplus in the budgets and all these other things?
At this time, there has not been any mention of any additional funding.
So then we would, uh, the administration would have to recommend, and there'll just have to be decisions made?
Yes, that is correct.
As to how we serve the students?
Yes.
A question on the permanent improvement fund? You said it was ten and a half million, once it's in there, you can't take it out, can you carry it over to the next year? So we could, if we wanted something, we wanted to do, we can basically take two years to do it instead of just one or three years?
Yes, as long, once it's earmarked in the capital projects fund, I cannot move it out of there, and it has to be used for capital projects.
But it is a carryover, could be carryover.
That is correct.
Another question I had, I noticed fifty percent of our total budget comes from the state, and you may not know the answer to this one, but I was curious how we align with other counties as far as how much of the state is funding other, not that I'm saying they should give us more money, I'm just saying with the programs and everything that we pulled on, I mean, taxpayers are getting a bang for their buck, so to speak, but I was just curious.
I, we're comparable, um, but I do have a, a comp sheet that I could share with the board members, that you could see what our assessments compare to other counties. I could provide that to you.
Yeah, well, it's not all that important, I was just curious as to how, how much the state is making, carrying to other counties, I guess, is what I'm saying. I didn't mean that in a mean way, I was just curious as to how we were faring, so to speak.
Do you know of any, you know, Ms. Walker said about the eight million dollars, um, that we're gonna lose after this year, are there any grants that we can apply for and extend, not, not extension, but just to get and fill those holes?
Not to my knowledge. But we can always, we can look, we can go to Sam, sam.gov is the, um, the website that governs, like, where, where you can apply for federal grants, and we can take a look to see if there are any grant opportunities that may be coming down from the beds.
I would think with the summer avalanche, we could, we could find something there, always seems like there are grants out there for kids after school in the summer.
Yes, a lot of them have eligibility requirements, and sometimes we don't meet that.
And actually, summer, the, that summer avalanche program, the reason it was snowflakes and avalanche and all that, it was originally from the money that we didn't have to spend on substitute teachers, because we didn't have snow. The one year is kind of how all that started, and it's just. And it's just been able to expand a lot with the feeding programs and the transportation. I think more of that has almost happened with the SRF funding. And then also, there were probably more targeted recruitment done for students that needed, had lost a lot during the COVID time. So there kind of was a lot of. I have a hard time believing we're not going to be able to do that, but I am concerned about the supports that are currently in the schools and the fact that we really haven't reduced, had reduction in force and all that because we've left teachers in to try to help get everybody back where they needed to be. And then, of course, we hired a lot of social emotional wellness type, you know, psychologists and, and all of that. And I think now we still have, the need is still going to be great next year, I guess, is what I'm at whenever the funding's gone. So it's gonna be a challenge.
Yes.
Any other questions? All in favor of the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent?
Awarding contracts. Board members, I would request that we table item A under the awarding of contracts. I had put that on there in hopes that we would have all the background information that we needed on the four bids that we got, mainly references is what we were trying to get. We weren't able to secure all the references for all of the bids. So I'm confident that we'll have that at our, available at our next board meeting. So if we could please table that, I would appreciate that.
Okay, moving on, reports, discussions, and follow-up action.
Our first item is the Accounts Payable Addendum A.
He's gone. Remember, Barry, he's in the hall.
Thank you. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Accounts Payable Addendum A as presented this evening.
Need a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of Accounts Payable Addendum A, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent? I do need that bell.
I was hoping that knocked for me and somebody to fall.
Our next item is a, the MUB waterline relocation agreement at North Elementary School. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Superintendent, you want to fill us in on what we're doing here?
MUB is moving the, the water line around North Elementary. It's a, it's a pretty big project, but it's gonna help us out up there. We've had problems up there with water sewer issues for years. So this is gonna give MUB more access and easier access to the water line. So it's a big project, but a lot of it's on our property, so.
So is it the yellow line on the chart or the green line or the? Sorry. Because I looked at all this and I'm like, eh, I don't know which one it is.
You can see they've got these little.
Oh, you've got the papers, so you can actually see.
Green is to be retired.
Yeah.
Which one's being retired, the yellow one?
Green.
The green. Oh, okay. So they're expanding, yeah, okay, good. So are they doing this in the summer or?
It's probably gonna be a, a, a pretty long project.
So do we have the same agreement with them that we're hopefully going to have with the Adrian's and Dan Ryan builders? That they observe peak times at the school and all of that?
I don't know that we've had those discussions with them, but I'm sure we'll need to enter into those discussions as they get ready.
Yep.
For how they're gonna, what their plan is to do it, when they wanna start, and all of the above.
So who's gonna handle that?
This is just to give them, Amanda Washington.
Amanda will handle that, okay, alright.
My question about the abandoned part. Will we get, is there a situation where we'd get some of the old right-of-ways back? Is there, I don't, my map didn't come up, so I'm not sure exactly where we're.
Thank you for sharing this with me.
Yeah, well, basically saying if they're moving it and they're not gonna be using our right-of-way that they have now, or is it, that not gonna be in effect?
I think the, I think the entire infrastructure serves our facility. So, I mean, it's a, it's a.
It's all in the same area, okay.
But I mean, it looks like it's gonna take the, the teacher parking around the bottom loop, which is gonna be a huge issue while they're doing. If, oh, do they close that off or do they just? I guess that's why I'm saying I think timing is gonna be critical on this.
And I think those are conversations we'll have as they enter into the project.
I guess my whole point was that if there's a right-of-way that they're not gonna be using, I think we should get it back in case in the future, all of a sudden you wanna build it.
That's the next agreement. This, this is actually just giving them permission to relocate. There's two agreements tonight with MUB for the same project. One is the right-of-ways and the easement.
Right.
Which is next, and this one's just.
So you'll come back to us with, with how all this is really gonna go?
Yeah, once, once we've agreed to it and they can put their plan together, we'll, we'll, we'll get either them and us to come and give you a presentation. So you can, you can ask them questions if you need to.
Well, because.
It's gonna be after the fact.
Well, that's why I'm saying, I mean, this is like a, for, just for everything. I think it's gonna be a real difficulty up there. Because there isn't anywhere else for anybody to go. It's kinda.
It obviously is gonna have to work in conjunction with the school. We're not gonna close the school down, you know? They have to have water to have the school open, so, I mean, all that needs to be taken into consideration when they make their plan.
Or even when, I mean, just like we were talking about before with the hours they work and, you know, when they're gonna be in there and when they're not. And I really think this teacher parking is gonna be a huge issue, possibly.
Well, at least MUB as an organization is used to tearing stuff up right in the middle of all kinds of activity and not destroying that, so, in general. So I think, I think we're okay. I think this is a service to the school system that we're, that we need. We've had an absolute.
Oh, absolutely, yes. It's got, it's a project, it's gotta be done. It's just gotta be done in conjunction with the functioning of the school.
And MUB has always, when they do stuff, been very conscientious of those around that project. So I'm sure this will be fine.
Yeah, I didn't have any issue with the project. I was just thinking of the future. If we had a right-of-way here on this side of the school, we're not gonna use it anymore. We're gonna move it over here. And I would like to see us get any of that back in case we wanted to add on to something, then it wouldn't be a hindrance.
I think, I think this right-of-way is, serves as the school, though. I mean, if we don't request something, it won't be used, so. Any other questions? All in favor of the MUB waterline relocation agreement at North Elementary as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Thank you, Superintendent.
Alright, next is the MUB right-of-way and easement agreement for the project at North Elementary. And Superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement as presented in your executive content.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I will need a second. I'll second it. Any questions from the board members? Hearing none, all in favor of the MUB right-of-way and easement agreement at North Elementary, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Superintendent, consent agenda.
Okay, we are down to our consent agenda. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented this evening to include items A, expenditures exceeding three thousand dollars. Item B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item C, the Amy M. Hazlitt Extended School Year Contract Renewal. Item D is the WVU School of Nursing Student Affiliation Agreement. Item E is the WVU School of Medicine Resident and Fellow Affiliation Agreement. Item F is the Summer twenty twenty-three Literacy Cohort Contracts with Marshall University. Item G is our Agent of Record Renewal. Item A is a Head Start Transportation Memorandum of Understanding. And item I are our minutes.
Need a motion? So moved. Second. Any questions or comments?
Do we have any idea how many people are going to be interested in being in these literacy cohorts? Or do we already have people signed up or?
Yes, and we already have people. There's probably twenty students from June fifth through July seventh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Moving on, board member updates. I will be at all three graduations.
Yep, me too. I have enough data after everybody else has known.
Go ahead.
Okay. Kind of rewind back to the historical sign for the Montegalia High School. I know I'd mentioned it a couple meetings ago. Good news is, and I want to probably thank Director Public Works at Westover, Jason Stein spring, and Mary Lucci. They've really, we had a good working, working relationship through this whole thing. But we've located some, a better source because I spoke with Aaron Parsons, and he's with the DOH Historical Signs, part of the sign division. And they're excited about, I did not know this, but there is a division that takes care of all the historical signs throughout the state. So they've agreed to get the sign and then see if they can repair it and get it mounted again. If not, then they will undertake ordering a new one. But the company that they're contracted with, he said it might be a year to maybe even two years to have a new one made and all that. So I told him we probably would prefer to get it remounted now if, or, you know, it's difficult through all that. So that's the way we left it. But again, I want to thank City of Westover for really working through all of this. So hopefully this will be up and running and headed in the right direction. Get it remounted, it would be ideal, but. And that was an educational part of mine. I did not realize there was a historical sign division of DOH, so. And Mr. Parsons was, you know, very glad to help, and he's, he's on it, so. Plus, he was talking about, because I'd mentioned, he was talking about the contract with the signs. So, you know, me, I'm thinking, okay, is there anything that our vocational MTech kids could do? But there is a grant that he said is gonna be starting. And we're really at the beginning of it, so I can't really tell you what that would all be about. But it's about locating all these signs throughout the state, seeing what kind of shape they're in, and have a report to them. So he and I discussed it about maybe that's something our high school kids could do in the county. Sometimes a district involves more than one county. So he's supposed to get back with me if he can tell us how many are in our county. Maybe that's a project one of the high school teams could put together and go out and look at signs and see what they need. And it'd be nice if we could get it to where the restoration side of it is something we could do in-house. Not in-house, because it'd be their responsibility, but give the kids something to, to work towards. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Barry?
Hey, we are in our second week of advanced placement testing in Montegalia County. And I've heard from, I've heard from Claymontale, but I've heard from Morgan County University, I that it's going very well. Numbers are still pretty high. It's something I hope we continue to see grow. You know, College Board and the Advanced Placement Program is probably the closest thing we have on a national scale to closing the achievement gap. And we're blessed in this county to have really highly qualified teachers and personnel who teach the content and execute the test and monitor it and proctor it. And I think it's, it's going really well, so in the second week.
So my only updates are, I did go to the session in Buchanan and that actually our session is Thursday night at the Marriott on the legislative update that the School Board Association is sponsoring along with our attorneys. The attorneys said there, there are an overwhelming amount of bills that probably will need updated and changed in the next session because of some of the language that was used in the bills that are not clear. I think something that, and I saw we appropriated funds for, and I'm imagining this is what it's for. One of the biggest thing is there is now going to be in the special education world, audio in the contained special education restrooms in the classrooms. And of course, parents will have to approve and will have to be made aware of this. And, but there is a concern that not all special education students use standalone restrooms. And so how, what are the methods going to be to try to work in that situation? And how are we going to move forward? I know we have a lot of standalone restrooms with, in our classrooms, but I also know that, you know, around the state, there's a lot of counties that don't have any. So that's going to be an issue. And then the other discussion, of course, was on the, a lot of discussion was on the success, Third Grade Success Act, and how that's going to be implemented and how counties are going to implement that. And I think that that's gonna be really interesting for our board to learn about how we're planning to try to hire and implement. And are we hiring or how are we doing this? Then the other, one of the other tidbits of information, I would say if anyone can go or sign it or be there Thursday night, you should go. It's pretty overwhelming, the amount of legislation that they gave candouts for. And, but there's so far going to be twenty-two new superintendents in the state. And again, they and their presidents will be invited to the July the tenth, to the session. And they will be spending a lot of time on making sure those superintendents are ready to help work with the boards and lead the boards. Because there's, they, they also spent some time, and I did not stay for all of that, which was how to run a meeting, how to go into executive session, how, board members cannot just vote on things unless someone from the central office or the superintendent recommends, and there's an appropriate first and second on that. Because apparently this has kind of been cropping up around the state with boards that are all new and superintendents that may not be present for one reason or the other. And then I've been made aware on the twenty-fourth of May, they're from eight to ten. There's an opportunity at Claymontale High School to go out there and view what they're doing. I believe it's a STEM morning. So I'm sure you contact the school if you're interested in attending that. I know we're all learning about all kinds of things to go to between now and the end of graduation.
Welcome, welcome to May.
Welcome to May. This is how it is, because I know MTech's doing a lot of signings in their graduation. Their special ceremony, I shouldn't say graduation, but certificate ceremony.
I have nothing. I'm good. One, one session you get out and they tell you about, you can be flexible on Robert's rules in the next session. They tell you how strict you gotta be.
Pretty much. It's, it's going to be interesting, I think, with these twenty, because a lot of the twenty-two new superintendents have never. Uh, it's, it's going to be interesting, I think, with these twenty, because a lot of the twenty-two new superintendents have never worked in a central office. Have, are, came from principalships in the county. And it's, it's going to be really interesting to see how all this goes. The other things that we were made aware of is the legislature is looking at, there is a proposal to put forth a bill where administrators have to go out and teach and work in the schools. And there really wouldn't be a true administrative office for a lot of the folks that we currently have. And I don't really understand how any of that would work because of course, as we all know, the work that's done in the administrative offices supports the schools and allows the people out there to focus on their educational programming in the schools and the instructional leaders on site, so. That was another discussion item.
Superintendent Policies?
Okay, um, we'll do this a little different tonight, I think, just as far as efficiency. First policy, uh, is Policy zero, one, four, two, point, three. This is orientation and training. Uh, this is the first time you're seeing this, uh, this evening. So Jennifer will give you an overview of what's involved in this policy.
Uh, this is very easy. This one is just a technical update. There were citations omitted originally, so the citations have been added. And it looks like there are changes and updates, but that's just reflecting how the policy is as we have it currently.
Anybody? It was a great discussion.
So we'll bring that back to you at your next meeting for first reading. Now, as you see, item B, C, D, E, and F, uh, are all titled Weapons. And, uh, this is the first time you've seen these. They're all located in different policy sections of the policy manual. And so Jennifer will give you an overview of B through F and any differences that may be involved in any of them, uh, and what the general, uh, purpose of, uh, the changes will be, so. Jennifer?
So all, not all of these policies are identical, but the change to the policy is. And it's a result of House Bill forty-five ninety-six. And it talks about who is permitted to possess deadly weapons on school premises, school buses, and at school events. So that, um, addition is added to these policies, so it is reflective of what the current law is.
And then it also continues to describe the weapons and all that from the Safe Schools Act.
Um, it, yes, and that was already in it, yes.
Yeah, but I'm just saying if anyone in the public wanted to look at them, it thoroughly describes.
It does. What, what is considered to be a deadly weapon, yes.
So a student may or may not possess a knife with a blade less than three and a half inches long.
They, that's still in the code that they may, but.
There's, there's different places, it says different things. It says a student, I'm going to read this, a student may not.
What are you, can you tell me what you're looking?
Sorry.
Is it fifty-seven seventy-two?
Seven seventy-two, very bottom. It says a student may not possess. Student will not possess a knife or knife-like implement with a blade of three and a half inches in length or less. A student possessing a knife with a three and a half inch blade in length or less not knowingly use or intended to be used for public, produce bodily injury or death shall be subject to discipline. I would really like that to be the, I don't understand, and I'm, we're going to have to, I don't know why we're not working through this, why a kid would have to have a knife in school with a blade three inches long at any point.
I think this is just a historic thing that goes back to, you know, the nature of, um, the outdoorsmanship in the state of West Virginia, but.
We don't bring rifles to school.
We don't, you're right.
We don't hunt in school.
I'm not defending it. Just think about that.
And why are we, why are we not as a school system at this point? A three and a half inch knife, uh, reaches internal organs very easily. Why would we have any policy anywhere? Because it's, some places it says they can, some places it says they can't. I mean, I mean, this, this, that's just plain and clear to me. There is no reason for a kid to have a knife in school with three inch blade. There's none. And, and I, and I don't know why, I mean, I won't approve a policy that says that they can have one.
Well, this does say that, um, that they will not possess.
But there's other places where defines, it says that they can have one, as long, and it could be one stuck on their side, as long as it's one that was intended for hunting and it wasn't, uh, I'm just obviously paraphrasing and not in, in the. But it's, I mean, it pretty much says crocodile Dundee can commit as long as he's hunting gators and not kids. That's what it says in our policy. No, I think we.
This, this doesn't say that, though.
It doesn't say it quite like that.
No, well, this says that they cannot have that.
This one says that.
Yes.
There's other policies that says what they are allowed to keep and carry. So we're, our policy is going to be that kids can't have knives in our schools, to be very clear. That's, is that where we're at? As I read through this, that's not what I.
Yeah, that's what this policy says. I mean, that's what, this is the weapons policy, and it says that they cannot.
Okay.
And this specific policy.
I've read it in several different places that you can.
The one for the twenty-one and over, is that what you're referring to? Because it was listed in the ones, uh.
So this policy is the policy that's in the student section of the handbook. So the five thousands is the student section.
I'll have to, we'll have to look this over and be very clear that we get this exact. Um, because it's, and I had one other question. It has to do with a gun on school property, um, locked in a car. If you pull into the school and you have a gun in your vehicle, if you have a gun in your vehicle and it's loaded and it's concealed, that's legal. It says if you get out of your car to go into the school and you're not going to be in that car, that it has to be unloaded. Then it says that you can't have a gun in a car in view. So I'm wondering how someone takes a loaded gun out of a concealed place, unloads that gun, and then puts it in a concealed place without that gun coming into view. The practicality of these policies is kind of.
Well, that's how the, the code is written.
Yeah, but why, yeah, I, I, but I mean.
That's a legislative issue and they don't want to revisit it. I mean, there hasn't been, there hasn't been any, any push to revisit it. But I mean, like, this first one is all about twenty-one and over people with concealed carry permits.
And I'm not, I'm not making this, I'm just, about the concealed in the car, I don't have a problem with a gun in the car. What I have a problem with is that is the way that it is written.
And it didn't used to be that way because if you, uh, if you recall, when, I think Mike was on the board when this started, if someone had a unloaded rifle in their car on, in a school parking lot, they were, that was a Safe Schools Act violation and they were out for three sixty-five. So I, I think some of this has happened through legislators having specific, uh, areas come to them and say, well, that's not sensible.
Well, they still couldn't have, well, unless it was locked in a trunk, they couldn't have a rifle, like on a gun rack in a car.
Hang on a second.
Yeah, we used to have the gun, right, the guns in the gun rack on the, in the back of the trucks all the time.
Because, yeah. That would be a few.
I don't think we could search them if it's in the trunk. You'd have to have a search warrant, wouldn't you?
Well, you wouldn't have grounds to get one because they're allowed to have it locked in the trunk.
That's what I'm saying, even if it wasn't, it'd be tough to.
I mean, board members, certainly, I mean, this is an important policy, so.
As good as they get.
I, I, absolutely. So, I mean, if you want to take more time to, uh.
I think we need to get this out for, I think we need to get this out for comment because we could use some comment. It's, it says the term knife shown clue but not be same policy, limit to any dagger, dirt, I don't know what that word is, stiletto, with a blade of over three and a half inches in length. Any swishable, is it blah, 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 blah? A pocket knife with a blade three and a half inches or less in length for hunting, it's, it's not considered a po, a knife. In one, it says it's not considered a knife if it's under three and a half inches. And then down in the same policy, it says a knife with a blade three and a half, it's, it's, it's contradictory as can be.
So I think what they're doing, they're giving the definitions that it, that's in the code, which is what a knife is. But then it goes on to state that in a school, you cannot bring a knife with three and a half inch blade or less. Or less, it says less.
Oh, does it?
Yes.
Or less, yeah.
Three and a half or less, so I can bring one three and a half.
Because anything beyond that is considered to be a knife, so.
Correct.
They're defining what a knife is, but then it, the policy goes on to say, even if it's not a knife, which this is not considered to be a knife, you cannot bring it to school.
That makes, that makes perfect sense. I'm going to read this very clearly and, and.
So you can't bring a knife or what's considered not to be a knife. If it has a blade of, because it has a blade of three and a half inches or less.
But it says it's not a knife and it says possession of a knife with three, with a blade three and a half inches or le, or le, of length or less.
So I'll let her open her.
Wait, this needs cleaned up. It really truly needs cleaned up. It's probably top of it should say in bold, don't bring a knife. Don't, don't bring anything, that's just, it's just, it's an unbelievable.
The people that need to clean it up is our state legislators who wrote it.
The problem is, if you adopt a policy that's in conflict with the law, it's not going to be enforceable.
Yeah. Well, we have to write it, it has to, it has to be verbatim as they, I'm glad they have pepper spray and, uh, metal knuckles are not also allowed, so.
I certainly would not recommend messing with the language that came from the state legislature on something as important as a weapons policy.
Yeah, because you, you can never defend it.
No.
And I know it sounds like sometimes we don't talk much about these policies because the language is in code. I mean, there just isn't much. There's nothing we can do without putting the school system at risk and.
But I do think getting public feedback is important, uh, if there is public feedback, uh, about.
One way or the other.
Clarification on some of these things, that's things that we can pass on, uh, certainly to our legislators to have them try to help get these things cleaned up.
Would be nice.
Maybe we can add to the policy though without hurting anything here, can we?
I think it just depends.
It depends if it's contradictory to the language that's there.
So as long as, as long as the top of the policy is fifty-seven seventy-two weapons, it should say, and we could add to the top there. In no, in no, in no way that you read this, does anything in here justify bringing a knife of any length to school. For something very clear. But we'll, I'll work on this over the next two weeks and we'll, and we'll get, I think we'll get public feedback, especially when we talk about, uh, how, the transfer of firearms, the unloading of firearms in the vehicle and how that should be clarified.
There are some, there are some, uh, the firearms side up, there's students that competitively shoot. They're not, not kill anybody, they're just go to target range.
I don't have, I don't have a problem whatsoever with firearms. I, matter of fact, I, I am in support of firearms. What my point is, is that what this policy, the other policy says, is the way you should handle a firearm is an impossibility. Well, you're absolute impossibility.
Yeah, you can't disassemble without somebody saying, you'd have to climb in the trunk and.
That's my, that's my point.
I got you.
We need to make sure that's, um, make sure that's clear. As I, I read through these several times.
It doesn't, i- if you have the weapon in the car, it, it doesn't matter if it's in, the only time it says it has to be out of view is when you're not in the vehicle. So it says a person twenty-one age or twenty-one years or older.
You can't have a firearm out of the vehicle on school property.
Well, I know, but it can be in view, in the vehicle.
So you could just, you could be sitting in the seat, disassemble it, put it out of view and then get out of the car and go to school. Got you.
I'll have to re-read that one too. That's not how I understood that. All right. Good discussion, let's look at attendance.
If I could talk.
If everyone's good.
Withdrawal from schools next, I think.
Withdrawal, yeah. Oh, sorry. Withdrawal from school, I just read, it's all started with a W.
So is, is it still the board's desire to go ahead and bring back those several weapons policies for first, uh?
So they can get out, because we can beat the dead whores. But if we really want the public to review them, we have to put them out for first reading, so.
Okay, we can do that for you. Okay, uh, next is Policy fifty-one thirty. Uh, this is withdrawal from school. Uh, you have seen this previously. This is for first reading. Uh, I do recommend that you approve Policy fifty-one thirty as presented this evening for first reading.
Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor of Policy fifty-one thirty, withdrawal from school for first reading, signify by aye.
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 Poes the same? It's time for getting kids in school.
Finally is Policy fifty-two hundred, this is attendance. Uh, you did see this at your last board meeting as well. Uh, I do recommend that you approve Policy fifty-two hundred as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Let's see, on a second, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor of Policy fifty-two hundred, attendance for first reading, signify by aye.
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 Poes the same? Superintendent Personnel?
All right. We are down to personnel, it's a busy time in our Human Resources Department. As our two, uh, folks over there can attest, uh, Superintendent does recommend that the board, uh, I have one change first. One change, uh, to the regular personnel list, uh, on page five, if you would look at line forty-two and strike the word substitute. That's page five, line forty-two, please strike the word substitute.
On the, on the regular list?
Uh, this is on the regular list.
There isn't a line.
Service substitute resignation, on page five?
Page five.
On, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong, I, I had the addendum, not that.
Can you find it? Yeah, it should, it should, it should just read service resignation. With that change, uh, I will recommend that the board approve the personnel list.
Ready?
Yeah. I'll move, wakes up.
Let Nancy second it, maybe I was out of.
Second?
She did, see? Any questions or comments? Board members? Hearing none, all in favor of the personnel list as presented, signify by aye.
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 Aye, pose the same.
It's really not a case we're not paying attention, we're reading them.
I understand.
As far as having a motion and a second. It's my case anyway.
All right, item B is our personnel list addendum, I have no changes. Uh, with that, I will recommend that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented.
So move?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
So how many more, uh, summer avalanche people do we need? Because this is what a lot of these hires are.
Any idea, Bob?
Close, not close.
About that many more? Probably, probably about that many. Basically one school at a time right now.
Okay, that's, that was my question, yeah.
As far as the word elementary goes, it's, they're basically one school at a time, so it's every day we're getting twenty, thirty requests for another group to be hosted.
Okay, well, me, because realistically, a lot of those teachers created those programs and planned to teach them, so. I just was wondering where we were in that process. Thank you.
Comments or questions, all in favor of personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
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 Poes the same? Next board meeting should be the twenty-third?
Yes, six P M.
No, six o'clock, it says it right on my computer. All right, with that, adjourned. Thank you, board members.
All it does for hacking.
Oh, well, then they're done to ask.
He's eating fifteen cocteau.